Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on October 10, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hennings.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing October 2023 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Supervisor Merkin, would you like to start?
Yes. Whereas each year about 6,000 babies are born with Down Syndrome, a 1 in 700 chance. And whereas there are over 250,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States and...
Whereas while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed into the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our communities.
And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universally desired goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reach their fullest potential. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month and encourage our citizens to work together to promote respect and inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome and celebrate their accomplishments and contributions. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hennings.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We have no agency reports today. Moving to Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development, Workforce Retraining, and Outreach Quarterly Reports. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Alrighty, good morning supervisors. I will go first since I always make Greg go first. We did send the reports over to you and then probably about 6:00 AM this morning, I sent you the Excel spreadsheet, so I apologize for not getting that over sooner. But as far as report with workforce and the retraining initiatives going on, so retraining is still going strong. We've still had a lot of individuals who are going through the classes. We actually had the industrial electrical maintenance students finish up. And so a lot of those were employees who are already at Danfoss American Packaging. We actually had two that did not have jobs. So we're still working with them. It is one thing that when I speak to, you know, with it being manufacturing, when I speak to manufacturers, it is one of those jobs that they're all looking for. I know of one manufacturer that they're looking to bring on eight, and that's a very skilled position. So, you know, these, these kinds of certificates are so good. CNA is obviously always a great class as well. We've got a meet and greet with them coming up next week. So, you know, everything is always really good with the certificate courses. We're still seeing a wide variety of students, location, age, you know, all of those things. So still a ton of great success with the retraining program as well. Moving into the workforce specifically, so we had a lot of events that Sarah and I attended this last quarter. Zubru at the park is always fun. We always partner with Iowa State alumni, so it's a really big fun event that evening. It's very hot that evening. But no, always a great time. But we've had a lot of great events. The ISU Welcome Fest, the Drake University Career Fair, U and I Career Fair, the People to People Career Fair. Sarah has been to, I think, almost every college and university. And if not, then I'm sure she's probably going to hit a few more this next quarter. So the career fairs are so great. We have seen a lot of individuals handing our, the resumes over. The Drake one is always great because they actually give us the whole resume booklet, and so we can email that out. That's always nice to have. Another thing that I don't believe is on here, so workinames.com, which is what we're promoting when we go to these, it has a new pop-up, and I don't know if you've seen it. So if you go to workinames.com, there will be a pop-up that comes and says, you know, would you like to, you know, because it is a free site, would you like to go ahead and register? And we've actually had a lot of people utilizing that. So now we're getting a lot more of those resumes coming in through theworkinames.com. It's something that our leadership brought back from a conference, and so we just implemented it, I believe it's been two weeks. So it's kind of exciting. We've had a lot of people using it. So, so yeah, that is kind of the workforce front as far as like career fairs, things like that. We do have the big National Guard one coming up this Sunday, so that'll be exciting. I'll be able to give you guys some numbers, you know, the next time that we see you on that event. But it has been promoted to all veterans throughout the state of Iowa, so that's kind of exciting that the National Guard has kind of helped to promote that as well. We are looking at about 15 to 20 employers so far, you know, still letting them sign up for the rest of the week. So excited to have them come over and be able to provide that. In regards to the rest of the report, so there's a lot of the statistics on, you know, workinames.com, our Facebook and things like that. Social media is a big hit when it comes to anything that we do workforce-wise. A lot of people use it. So these are just kind of the statistics on that. Then you're See Yourself in Ames. We finally wrapped that up last quarter, and it was a great success. We had an average of about 100 students at every event. Some of the events were bigger. I think the smallest was 94. But I mean, great feedback from all the students. And another thing that we did with that program is instead of just the intern students, we've also been kind of pushing that out to businesses that any of their young professionals that are just kind of being hired on, that maybe are new to the area as well. You know, inviting them so that they can experience it as well, because maybe they are new, you know, if they could have graduated from U and I and then moved to Ames for a job. So really trying to expand that program as well and really, you know, show people all the amazing things that we have here in Story County. So that's, that's fun. Sarah is already, has ideas already for, you know, fun things to do with the young professionals next year. So more to come on that. And then just to kind of wrap up all my workforce things, events that we have. So the Future Ready Night, which is MSA-wide, we had, last I looked, we had about 160 people signed up. So this is out to all juniors and seniors and their parents, and it will be hosted at the Ames High School. They're in their auditorium. FAFSA will, I'm sorry, I can, will come talk about FAFSA and all of the changes. And then we are going to be hosting a college/university/military and career event right afterwards and feed them pizza in between. So it should be a really great event. And really, when we looked at the numbers, we have students from all school districts in Story County. So I'm really excited about that and, you know, see what we can grow it into, you know, next year as well. So that will be happening on October 18th. I'd already stated the National Guard Career Fair is coming up this Sunday. Women in Leadership is October 23rd. Really excited about that. So that'll be at Delaviti. And it'll be a great networking. You get a free headshot, and there's going to be a pop-up bookstore, and it's going to be a lot of fun to kind of finish out the year. We've already got some great ideas looking at 2024 as well. So yeah, all kinds of great things happening with women in leadership. And then Symposium also is another big one. We are finishing up with getting the speakers lined up and, you know, kind of getting their bios and stuff so that we can really promote that event. There's a lot of new things that we will be looking at. We have someone coming to really speak on mental health. We are having someone come talk about disabilities in the workplace. We have someone that is speaking about the different ages and what does that look like? And it's actually someone who's done a lot of research from the University of Iowa and, you know, the different ages in the work, in the workplace, and how do you, you know, collaborate with all those different ages? So all kinds of different things that everybody is, you know, dealing with, and so really looking forward to that event. And so, yeah, we'll have a lot of different breakout sessions, keynote, launch, and just a fun day. So high level, that is what I've been doing the last quarter. Any questions for me?
I think the only question that I can have is kind of a weird one, but I noticed you're saying workinames.com, but then when you put in workinames.com, it comes up workinamesmsa.com. Are you connecting, you must be connecting that webs, your website?
Yeah. So we changed it to workinamesmsa.com, but I mean, if you Google workinames.com as well, and that's what a lot of...
Comes up and connects. I didn't know if you were dropping one or just keeping, keeping both.
So I guess the Ames Chamber in Economic Development is kind of going through renaming eventually. It's something that we're definitely looking at. And like, what do we do with the website when we come up with our new
Gotcha.
name as well? So, yeah, that is, I don't know if I was supposed to...
I think, I think, I think we all know that the work that the Ames Chamber is doing is expanding.
Correct.
And so really to reflect the work that's happening and, and kind of the pulling together of communities.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think that that makes sense. I don't know if it was supposed to be a secret or not, but I think it's...
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that's something that, I mean, we have known in our organization is that we've really wanted to be MSA-wide. It's something that all of us really strive for and try to work, you know, within all of our communities. So yeah, it's definitely something that leadership is taking a look at. And then how do we get, you know, workinames.com to also correlate with what, what is our name? And yeah, so, yes, more to come in 2024, I'm sure.
Alright, thanks.
Um, I was looking at the retraining program section of your report. I noticed the average age was 39.
Yes.
Is that what you've normally been seeing, or is that getting older?
No, this is the oldest average that I've ever had. So yeah, that, that was something new when I did it. I was like, oh, okay. Yeah, because usually our average age has been 33, 34, you know, 32, that kind of thing. No, this is the highest average that we've had, which I thought was very interesting.
So are these, you know, I don't know how to ask this. You, you know, the people who've been in the program. Are you just seeing more people that are, are shifting careers?
Um, or... A little bit of both, so...
Or later, what?
Yeah, yeah. So a little bit of both. So like the industrial electrical maintenance, those are people that have been working in manufacturing since they, maybe they got out of high school. You know, but now they're moving up into a very skilled position. So I think that's also kind of, you know, having that class of 10, you know, that's going to kind of help the average because they've been in the workforce for a while, but now they're not just going to be on the production line. They're going to be, you know, your maintenance people, because, you know, our maintenance people are starting to get older and retire. But, you know, your CNAs, there's a very wide range of individuals. There's a lot of younger ones, but then there's, you know, also older individuals that, you know, have maybe been doing some kind of home care, but not an actual CNA. So I've seen a few of those as well. And so they actually want to have their CNA so that they can get into an actual nursing home or the hospital or something like that. So, yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one question about the retraining. So have, have you connected with Project Iowa? Have, have you guys had any meetings?
Yes. So I talk to Jason quite often, and he's actually come to a few different events. And I guess meetings really, not really events, but meetings throughout the community. So he came to an HR meeting that I had in Nevada last week, the previous week. He was in Huxley with me. And so, yeah, definitely helping to expand theirs outside of Ames. As people know about the retraining, and then how does that correlate? What, you know, why do the two programs work so well together? And how can people use that? So, yeah, so we've been, yep, we've been meeting, and then he's, I've been trying to help him get out into the other communities and different, you know, meetings and places. So, yes.
Awesome. Cool. Because it just, I know I say it every time, but it just feels like such a natural progression for someone to move into your program or this program from the Project Iowa program.
Yeah, it's always funny though, like the, the two times in the past few weeks that we've been, you know, having these meetings, people always look at me like, why? Why are you having him come talk to us about a program when you have a program? I'm like, okay, but listen to the programs.
Different programs.
Different programs that can work very well for everybody. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any, any other questions for Nikki?
Okay.
Hey, so I'm not used to going second, so bear with me here. In front of you is my quarterly report for the outreach. You will see that it was a very busy time. Of course, as it goes, when I submit this, I always think of a few more things that should have gone on there or just on the periphery. But just going down the list here is a short little recap. Gilbert, the houses, or not, sorry, the commercial-like development with Jensen that we've been negotiating for the past several months, that was approved in concept by the city council in September. It is in front of legal. They have an agreement in principle. It's going to be finalized if not later this month, early November, which is right on track. And Luke is looking to move dirt as early as this winter. So spring of next year will be actual construction of the infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, and things like that, if everything holds to the timetable. They're very excited in the community, 40,000 square foot, very eager to see it happen and very eager to have something never happen like that, and Gilbert happened. So there's a lot of excitement there on that. I got a phone call from Sonia and the mayor a couple of weeks ago now. They were having issues connecting with Uni-Pacific on some projects they were doing with the Main Street paving and some road projects. And what the, what the problem was, is that Uni-Pacific has a process where they require individual applications for each project. So even if you have the same project, if it intersects their lines three times, you have to submit three different applications. So I, using my contacts with Omaha, was having some, facilitating some discussions to help streamline the process, and we're making progress. It's just one of those things of they have a process, City Gilbert has a process, and they're not really meshing if that works. Roll into the comp plan revisions are almost done. They're going to be sent off to MIPA for the mapping and finalized with them. I'm to be in front of the Planning and Zoning Committee next Monday night. Should be a short meeting. I've been keeping them updated. We've been doing this little by little. One of the things that we want to do is streamline the comp plan, but fully aware that with the upcoming city elections, there's going to be a new mayor and, and a couple of new council members. So we're going for a clean slate and updated plan, fully aware that we're probably going to have to come back on the future land use side and fix that next year when the new seated members are done. So that's a work in progress. Very eager to have that done. And then also too, with Melissa taking over for Jody, the changeover in staff is also part of the planning as well. So we have that planned to launch in January of next year. Downtown communication, I am working still with the building owner, the old building connected to the old City Hall Community Center. Working with his legal attorney, had a conversation with him last week. He looks to have a formal counterproposal to the city as of Thursday. Hopefully it'll be beneficial. I've had really good discussions. My, my concern with that is, is that we're getting close to winter, and we want to make sure that we have progress and not just sitting there with a vacant cold building that we all know that the longer it is vacant, the more it's cold. There's no heat, there's no people in it. It's going to deteriorate very quickly. And then RADC, Royal Roland Area Development. They have a new board, new chair, Kayla. She's a former city council member that moved just outside city limits. We've had several discussions. Fabulous organization. They got a lot of eagerness to do things. We're going through some training with them just to understand exactly what their role is in economic development, where the money comes from, what the tools are. You, you just can't ask for money from a public government entity and then get money. There's a process, and it's education. So a lot of eagerness, young blood. The average age dropped by about 30 years. So it just shows you exactly what kind of changeover they've, they've seen in the past three months. So it's a learning process, but positive all the same. Zering got an email from the mayor and from the city clerk, very appreciative of the supervisors approving the ARPA request. They're very, very eager to get moving on that and submitting things, but also too, they would like to have you up there to see the project and also see the new facility there that's looking to expand next year as well for a tour. He's finally up and running at full capacity, and he feels comfortable for safety reasons to have you up there. So I'm going to be sending an email out to you and Leanne to get you on the calendar later this, probably early December, just for a tour of that and the community, excuse me, community itself, just to see what your dollars are doing for ARPA. Colo had a workshop with them last Monday. They have approved a mixed housing development for their acreage on the south side of, along Highway 30. They are very excited about that. We are looking, as soon as the crops are out, to have tours with developers and photographs and everything else to start launching inquiries for local developers. They're looking for mixed use, so they're looking at LMI and using their, their category, low moderate income housing, TIF allocations, and then also single-family homes.
Is the, are the ARPA dollars that were awarded for the housing development, are they going to this one, or is this a different development?
This is somewhat connected, but not directly. So it's more like the, the LMI TIF dollars I'm talking about is strictly for the city money that's been building up through, through their TIF over the years. I, I can't speak on what your ARPA dollars are speaking to, but my only role in this whole discussion has been the LMI TIF that the city, city has through their traditional funding. My role in this has been just for the fact being that we are allocating the LMI strictly for mixed use. So we're going to target the first is that 41% they have. That funding that only can be used for LMI, that is the first segment of housing. So it's going to be townhomes, what used to be called duplexes as standard. Mixed, could be rentals, could be family occupied, doesn't matter, but there's going to be that moderate income housing that's so desperately needed. And then we're going to move out and move further south into the single-family plots, the more traditional housing plots, the things that the rest of the TIF can be used for. We haven't finalized any financing or anything. We just strictly had the workshop on the concept. The council, the mayor, we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page, and they approved that workshop last week. I will find out for you.
I, I was just wondering if this was, you know, even more housing that they were talking about putting in.
So this is the target they were looking at. I don't know what the decision is made on the ARPA dollars yet, but I do know there's inquiry on the north side, and I also have an inquiry already on housing on the west side. So since, since the news broke that the city is pouring some resources into their property, it's kind of been a catalyst for surrounding properties right along the borders.
Great.
McCall'sburg, they were approved for Homes for Iowa. They are placing a new home there in 2025, which has spurred another lot that is looking to be purchased individually on the open market. That will be next door to the Homes for Iowa lot. I'm working on a purchase agreement with them right now that I hope to have in front of council in early November, and then we will have that done with Story County Housing Trust and moving forward for 2025. Collins, what is not happening in Collins at the moment, rural empowerment grant we didn't apply for due to some restrictions on it. We're going to go for private donations for a food truck court right at the intersection where the paving is going to be when it comes over for the Heart of Iowa Trail. So right before it goes under the road, we're looking to place a food truck court right there, gravel spots, picnic area, place for bikers and, and families to sit. But it will also be accessible to the playground and the ball fields on the other side of the road. So they'll be able to cross over and serve the community, day in and day out, along with the traffic on the trail, once that happens. Catalyst Project closed at IEDA, that has been confirmed by Jimmy T. down at their soft opening targeted for later November. Talked to Shelby. She is finalizing the last bit of a few things, but she is going to have a soft opening with an invite out to the county for the facade grant and the match that you did for Catalyst. And then that is going to be, just see what she's done, which is beautiful work. It's a beautiful building, and I think it'd be really impressed. New Gunsmith Store is open. He's looking at facade grant next year. He's looking to increase some business first. He did a ton of work on the, on the exterior side of it. The facade grant, we will be more for the front edge, facade, windows, doors, things like that. Everything else he's structurally done, he's done private financing for, so that will not be used on that. Cambridge have a visioning set for November. Applied for a rural empowerment grant. That is supposed to drop Thursday. What I'm hearing so far is very positive, but the official word is not going to come out until later this week. I know Superresmerkins on pins and needles waiting for the broadband announcement to hit. I've been checking my email consistently as well. As, as far as I know, on the rural empowerment grants, Cambridge scored very high. So I'm expecting good news, but cross your fingers until it hits. And then Housing Rehab Program closed in Cambridge, and then also too, the rural empowerment grant is kind of been a catalyst. We are looking at having a big kickoff in January 24 with the new committee. When that launches, it will be everything concerning Ember to YSS to downtown to everybody. We have Michael Crum from the Business Record, who's a, who's a Cambridge resident sitting on there. We have some teenagers from the local school district. We have business. We have council. We have myself, Kayla from MIPA. It's a good committee that we're going to have to, to launch this, this thing. And then lastly, Slater, the childcare project that we, that we've been following, there's been a change in location. The property that was going to be built from construction is not happening. They are looking at a new location, at a remodel of a current facility in Slater. So I am getting updates as we speak, but it's not going to be a new structure anymore. It's going to be a remodel of a current structure in Slater. And I just wanted to give you a heads up on that one, because as soon as I get full details, I'll let you know full details and give Leanne, so we can get it on the agenda for discussion. It's the same amount of people, same amount of kids, same amount of structure and programming. It's just the facility has gone up so much in building that she's had to pivot to a current structure that she's opened a lease that will provide a much cheaper alternative to get her off the ground. So, any questions?
That was a lot.
That, that was a lot. I felt like I'm rambling for a while, but when you have 10 communities, it takes a while to get through everything, so.
Is the Dollar Star with Roland still part of discussion, or is that?
So...
Kind of off now?
No. So what, what happened with the Dollars, the Dollar General store is that they were still interested on the east side. And then the mayor, Mayor Webb got involved directly with Dollar General and started pitching other options back on the west side, and then they are considering their options. So the east side location is now off the table. Everything they want to do is west side. But considering west side is where they were overpriced the last time around, there's been no movement at all. With the comp plan, my focus on the comp plan has been the commercial development, Roland Industrial Park Phase Two. The west side that has the interest on that, the housing side, the urban blight designation and everything else. And the mayor has taken point on that when it comes to Dollar General. But as for the east side, that is no longer under consideration as of now.
And is there still conversation about potentially a childcare center in the old building? The old City Hall building?
Not the old City Hall building. So the, one of the concepts we've been looking at is when they moved to the old Avaya Bank Building, when we construct the new City Hall Community Center fire station concept, which is the current target of mayor and council, Avaya Bank will now be the childcare center.
Gotcha, okay.
But there's also conversations with the Library Foundation, which is the nonprofit that was created to support the library. And if the library gets in the mix, then we could look at the old library, which has green space, which has straight ADA access, which has the ability to be upgraded relatively cheaply compared to building brand new, and has ample space for the amount of kids they're expecting. So it, it would be, it really would be. The governor's recent childcare announcement funding mechanism is not going to be viable. It has to, it's not viable for Roland. What we are going to be looking at though is now that we're going to have the comp plan done, the mayor and council, we can finalize the old buildings, the old building status, whether it's sold or demolished or whatever, then once we have that done, we can move to constructing the new facility. And we've already targeted financing and grants and USD funding for that. Any more questions?
Questions?
Alright, thank you both.
Thank you both.
Okay, moving to item nine, consideration of minutes from October 3, 2023.
I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hennings.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hennings.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of the October 12, 2023. I move approval of the October twelfth, twenty twenty-three claims is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded Heddens.
Hi.
Merkin.
Hi.
Basil, I. Consent agenda?
I move approval of consent agenda items is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Hi.
Heddens.
Hi.
Basil, I. We have no public hearing items today or additional items. Moving to departmental reports, engineer's quarterly report. Morning Darren.
Good morning. Start out on the maintenance side of things. Um it's been a very dry summer, which helps with road construction, but. With gravel roads, it leads to washboarding and dust issues and we've had our. Share of those issues south in Nevada, especially with the DOT projects pushing a lot of traffic on gravels. Uh some of those are getting wrapped up thankfully, but uh we've done the best we can with them. Um but it's hard to do much without moisture in that rock to bind it together. Uh maintenance crew's also been uh busy with a number of culvert repairs and a few larger bridge repairs while some of those streams are dry. We could get to some areas that are usually wet under bridges to do repairs, so that was helpful. Uh our contractor recently completed some slurry crack ceiling up by E eighteen. And S twenty-seven near McCall'sburg, which improves the ride quality pretty greatly. And then also on uh the Shipley pavement. Uh that we had some depressions over some culverts. You probably heard. Back at Township Trustee meeting, a lot of comments about that. So they got those smoothed out, which uh really helped the ride on that road. Um just lastly, we're getting our plows ready to notice this morning, getting some uh plow fronts on our trucks. Unfortunately, winter's coming. Right now the forecast looks like less snow this winter, but you never know. Uh construction had eleven projects this year. Everything went pretty well. Everything is completed except for the S fourteen bridge. Uh we have about two weeks left on that. That could go to three if we get. Rain the next two or three days, that could slow down the grading, finish grading. But got uh. Everything else completed, that Palestine fifteen bridge that was delayed. Uh we hope to let that again here in November, maybe December. See if we can get some better pricing than we did last time. But delaying it a year also kind of helps us build up money put towards it, so hopefully we can get that done next season. Project construction design, only comment is on the Maxwell Bridge. We got that grant for eight hundred thousand for uh twin bridges down there. Um construction probably gonna be in twenty twenty-five now, not next season, just cuz some of the permitting issues. Uh it's a difficult hydraulic design there, so. That part's taking a little longer, so it'll be a twenty-five construction on that. Not much change on the federal transportation bill. The safety SS four A grant, but we did get, we did pick a consultant. So they will be, they have ninety-nine counties to do, so I don't know where we're at on that list, but. Once that starts, we'll probably have to have some public meetings once they have some data ready on the safety action plan. Uh city in Nevada construction. They have that S fourteen project just north of town here on S fourteen closing under the railroad. For a number of months, they got delayed for some utility issues. The bad part about that is it's still ongoing and that's used by a lot of harvest traffic getting to Lincoln Way Energy. Um so a lot of those trucks are taking the gravel across.
What was the problem? What did they run into?
I guess they weren't expecting to hit all the utilities underneath the road. There are storm sewers and. Had to redo, but I'm not sure why it's taken so long to do um. Haven't gotten many updates on it unfortunately, but uh.
Okay, well, thank you.
DOT construction, the the highway thirty. Stretch over to Colo is back open. Um that's taking a lot of pressure off our gravel roads to the south. Work started on the S fourteen bridge over Highway thirty out here. Uh has closed now for the estimated three weeks, get the tie-in pavement done. Uh the bad part about that is our S fourteen bridge is still going, so there's a stretch of S fourteen. You can't get out either direction now, so. Have to use gravel South S Avenue as the official detour. Which is pretty rare to use a gravel road as an official pavement detour, but with no other choice there. And then work started on the five eight eighth interchange. The grading will be near complete this year and then. Paving and bridge work you'll see starting up next year. That E twenty-nine driveway culvert issue that we found, um we did get the. The liner under the culvert put in. We just have a stretch on the outlet. About eighty foot of pipe left that our crews are gonna do, but we're gonna have to. Uh rent a larger excavator and a trench box due to the. Topography, the area, there's a steep slope and just for safety reasons, we've got to. Have some better equipment for that and hopefully I saw the pipe came in this morning was. Delivered, so hopefully we'll be able to get that yet this fall.
Is that larger equipment fairly easy to get a hold of or is there a long waiting list?
The excavators are usually, we've rented a couple in the past two years and they're fairly easy to get, so we don't anticipate problems there. Uh carbon pipelines, it seems there could be some delays in those and updates every day, but we've kind of put. Our stuff on hold. We have a lot of driveways. We have to go out and permit and road crossings. Uh we don't wanna waste our time either doing all that ahead of time, so we're kind of putting that on hold. We've done some of it, but. There was more news on Navigator, maybe getting delayed a little bit recently, so. Summit did come in a couple of weeks ago. And proposed their own road maintenance agreement, which we have a good one, we feel in place already, what we've used, so I'm not sure why they wanna rewrite it. But uh I'm working with them on that, but again, all those things are kind of on hold right now. Uh some level B roadway issues that we wanna maybe vacate. Uh the first one is five ninetieth south of Highway thirty. Um what's happening there is the DOTs uh negotiating with the Jensen Homestead on the south side of Highway thirty. They're originally looking to build them a new access cuz they're gonna cut off access. The five ninetieth, the better road and everything, that'll be closed and Jensen's driveway. Think they have some difficulties in negotiations. I think they're leaning towards just purchasing the property outright, the whole farmstead. Um but in doing that, they're asking that are the five ninetieth south of Highway thirty is at level B right now. But they want us to actually vacate it, so it doesn't even look like a road and cuz they're gonna close it off. Um I don't see any issues with that on the the north half a mile. But the south half a mile has enough different property owners that I think the level B roads need it just for property access. Um. So I'll bring those details back to the board at some point on what the DOT really wants to do. At one point they were talking about upgrading. It wanted us to upgrade the whole level B road to get Jensen an access and I. Didn't think we'd be very supportive of that, but uh it's not like that turned out to be an option anyway for them. Um Hunter Street, this is Hamilton County line. There's a mile of level B road. That's all. One property owner on each side, so it makes sense just to vacate it. They're farming in the right of ways, so. When that starts happening, we try to get it just vacated and then farmers can do whatever they want with the road. The Story County property owner is very much in favor, but the. Hamilton's kind of working with the. Their property owner, he's not so much in favor. We're not sure why, but we're trying to figure out why.
That's not, there's no bridges on that. That's west of GW Carver on Hundred. There's a couple of bridges, right?
Uh we have a bridge just west of the level B portion. Bad bridge for us, um but this is yeah, just east of that.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
And then one that's just generated by us is one hundred and eighty street off of R seventy-seven. It's another mile stretch that. We've had in the past year or two, a lot of vehicles get stuck in cuz they don't realize how bad it really is. And again, farmers are farming inside the right way, which. Messes up all the drainage and so that's why cars get stuck, so there's nowhere for drainage to go. But all those landlords have other access from other roads, so we're gonna uh at least attempt to vacate that one and see what kind of public comment we get. So I'll probably bring all three of those to the board at one point uh for public hearings and get public comment on those. This fall, winter. I wanted to comment a little bit on some technology upgrades we have going on in the department. Our county engineer service bureau has come up with a a lot of good tools for us to use and new software packages. Specifically with electronic time sheets and time off requests and then winter call out systems. Um we hope to start implementing some of those fairly soon. Um. We did run into some issues. IT came out recently with the multi-factor authentication. We realized we had a number of issues with. A lot of our uh crews just use their phones only to access and they use webmail only. They don't have Outlook accounts. And they're required to change passwords every ninety days and we come to realize that. Using your phone, there's no way to change your password, so.
Oh.
That creative and we're wondering why so many of them had timed out and then IT has to reset their accounts. We're doing that constantly, but we come to. Realize they don't have a way to. They would have to come in and get on a PC and change their password that way and that's not really efficient for us. Uh so we're looking at ways we can uh do that better. And we also have a. A GPS system on our, all of our motor graders and some of our trucks now that we've had for years, fifteen years, I think. We might be doing away with that and using that money and put towards um like. County-owned cell phones, we can use those for the tracking instead of a GPS system and that will also help us use some of this new software and communicate better. Do electronic time sheets and uh. Get away with some of the private cellphone use, but. Most of our employees don't have an issue using it, but. We looked at possibly going to just Gmail accounts instead of county emails to get get away from these password changes and um. But the issue comes up. You have to save those email uh correspondence and document those for so many years. And because it's on their private phone, that would somewhat open up their phone uh if there was ever legal issues or discovery. Uh so we don't want that to ever happen. And that's another reason why these county-owned cell phones would help, then they can use them and not have to worry about that side of things, so. Number issues get worked out, but the software is gonna be really uh. Increase our efficiency uh quite a bit. So that'll be great, but it's gonna take some time to get all the issues ironed out.
Darren, can I pause pause you for a second?
Yes.
Have have you talked to um HR at all about the the like, cuz I know, I know HR is looking at. Electronic time sheets and and all of that.
Just had that discussion with Alyssa, how we need to sit down and talk about it since we're getting close enough. The thing is, we haven't spent any money on what we're doing. This is done by. For all ninety-nine counties and. Uh if we can use it, great, but if it doesn't integrate with what the rest of the county is doing, it might not make sense, but we do have a lot of. DOT coding and stuff that um is being specifically specifically designed software for county engineers departments, so. We'd like to be able to use it, but.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that they were they were looking and so anyway that we can make that work more easily.
Yep.
Um but I totally appreciate software that's being built just.
Yeah.
For for your department.
And right now this software um will dump right into solutions. There's an export, but if we go away from solutions, then that might be. Um any issue we need to talk about, but uh. Yep, we're gonna have a meeting here fairly soon with the auditor and HR to see how these are all gonna fit together. Uh drainage districts, just a couple of things going on with Bolton and Ming. They're. Uh still working on an open ditch repair on DD eleven and they're also. Looking at an entire study on that district again. It's uh been going on for a number of years. And then they're working on the Boone Story eight. Um that one involves the road crossing under E twenty-three. There's. Mike Cox is also wanting updates. He's. Got an update again this morning I saw from them. He's working on the Idols project there too, how it all ties together. But I think ours got delayed a little bit with some utility, the water line issues with the road crossing. So they're still working on the plans, but he thinks he's getting real close to having something uh. To get together or could actually let that project. Um just a few more issues that came up since I submitted the report um. We're starting our night drive, which is where we go out and check our signs for reflectivity and the nighttime hours when it's dark. They're seeing more and more issues with the nine one one road signs. A lot of those are getting faded. And that that's kind of a statewide issue. I think they were all kind of installed throughout the state about the same time period and they're all. Kind of wearing out at the same time. So there is currently a survey through the county engineers uh group that's asking how counties are handling this. Cuz originally they were put out by the nine one one boards and paid for that way. But they slowly get turned over the engineers' office and maintained by the engineers, so. Once I get that uh survey back, I'll get it to the board, so that that might come up during budget discussions, how we're gonna pay for all these replacements if we're gonna. Use nine one one money or uh kind of convert it over to engineers' money. Um one hundred and eighty street between uh Gilbert and Ames, the east-west gravel road. There's a railroad crossing that's. Got some visibility issues and it's not just brushing trees, it's uh a hill, so. Probably something that's never gonna uh be cut back, so I'm looking at, we had some complaints that area is kind of growing, so and a lot of. School traffic. Kind of goes that ways and cuts across sometime. It's kind of a blind railroad crossing with no lights or. I'd like to request a stop sign there. There's currently yield signs on the. Railroad. The crossbucks are technically stop signs, but a lot of people don't realize that, so they. Don't really stop it, it's kind of blow through it. So the uh railroad users didn't have too big of a problem putting stop signs up, but uh. So I've contacted um. Contact with the road is getting more difficult every year. It seems like that they referred me to some consultant outside the railroad, so I'm trying to work with them. Um but to. Uh get that going, I think I have to fill out some permit form. I just got that this morning, but uh. Eventually, if I do do the stop sign, uh the board will have to approve that as it'll be a a county stop sign, but it's technically in the railroad right of way. Um but I think that'll improve the safety on that uh for the time being. And then another railroad issue we had come up recently was. Again, they're they keep moving in and closing crossings without informing us at all. They used to at least inform us a week or so ahead of time. But why this one was so uh different was it was on our official detour route through Cambridge for our S fourteen bridge. So we have all kinds of signage pointing them through Cambridge for the official detour route and then they close the railroad right in the middle of that. Um that was about a week or a little over a week ago, so we went down and talked to them. They thought it'd be a day, but that's usually the. Answer we get, so we didn't redo all of our signage. Um and then of course it went through the weekend. It turned out to be more like five days. Uh we didn't have too many complaints or anything on the issue, but it just kind of. Bringing up that issue again, the road just comes in and does things. It doesn't matter to them and it screws up everything around them. This is getting more frustrating all the time, the lack of communication with them.
But it's open again now.
It is open finally, yes. And then the last issue, it just came up this morning. We submitted a grant for some portable traffic signals. Those are stoplights we put out when we have a construction uh issue. We've never owned those, um but they do have a program where you can apply. They're about sixty thousand dollars. They were. We thought they'd be a hundred percent funded if we were approved, but they just got back to us this morning and asked if. There's enough money left in there. They could probably give us forty thousand of the sixty thousand. Um. So if we find out that, I told them we would probably do that, but I'd have to get board approval. They come back and say, yes, I'll probably be back to the board asking for that extra twenty thousand. It's not in our budget now, cuz we thought it'd be a hundred percent funded.
How many signals you get for that sixty thousand?
One on each side. Yeah, and that that way you can have a closure overnight. So many of our patching jobs and stuff, we have to get wrapped up and back open. So roads aren't closed overnight, but if you have signals, you can actually.
You've been renting them now.
That. Bridge patching fiasco we had on the R thirty-eight last summer. Iowa Plains was able to bring some up uh on a quick notice, but that's fairly rare that they'll have them available. They're usually rented out. Um that's the last time we had to rent them, but uh. Yeah, you can rent them, but they're very, we don't. It affects our operations quite a bit, especially with concrete patching, cuz that has to cure out. So we have to quit by like noon to let it cure out and get it back open, uh so it's not closed. So it's not closed overnight. If you have a stoplight, you can leave up overnight. We can. Patch all day and then leave a cure overnight with one lane traffic. And then the big uh, Iron Cross Bridge out here on Lincoln Highway. We're gonna have a pretty major deck patching job out there. And I'd really like to use them on there, even though a contractor will probably do the job. If we supply the lights, it'll be much cheaper. And then we can keep traffic one lane going and they won't have to shut that down every day to get it back open to traffic, so. Really helps the efficiencies of our uh, maintenance work and. A lot of counties are starting to get them and I would really like to have them as well, but.
Okay.
The safety programs of the DOT that funds these, so that's what this was through. Um, we originally applied by ourselves and they got back and said, are you willing to share with another county? So we teamed up with Boone County on the application, so we're gonna share them. Then they came back with this, so I asked them this morning, I'm like, so if we do this, are they just ours or do we have to share? I'm still, they replied to that, but. I think it's well worth our money if we can get two-thirds of it paid for through the grant.
Well, and if, if, if they come back and say, yeah, we do still need to share with Boone, well then Boone County would.
They can.
Obviously be asked to chip in some of the funds.
So if I want to hear back on that, I'll be back and ask the board for that. Um, I think that's all I had. Any questions?
You're closing two and a half or three level B roads and, and that makes a lot of sense. Um, is there anything more you've thought about, about any bridges that we should be considering closing? We're always talking about how much it's gonna cost to repair, maintain, replace all these bridges we have.
We definitely have that list that I give you once a year, five-year program of the bridges. We're saying we'll maintain them at low cost, best we can until it just becomes. Uh, not efficient to do that anymore, and we kind of have a list of ones we'd like to close. Probably the first one's gonna be that one we just talked about up on the Hamilton County mine. It hasn't deteriorated much more, um, so I was hoping to close that last year, but. The last bridge inspection report showed no change, so it's posted, I think, eight tons now. Lowest you can go is three tons when you get to that point. Just liability makes you better just, oh, better off closing it at that point, cause. Even at the postings, the low, last time I was up inspecting it myself, I saw a semi go over with a combine on a trailer and. It just gets ignored, so.
And that's the concern of liability and my, my thought is also if we know we're gonna close a bridge in a few years. Why put maintenance money into it? Why not just go ahead and get it closed so we can divert, you know, whatever money to a bridge we need to keep open?
We are, I've all on those bridges that have multiple bridges per mile.
Yes.
Focusing on those so people can get access and if. A bridge has to be closed, if there's this one bridge that has to be closed in the future and people have to take uh, one direction out, that's what we're gonna have to do. Future unfortunately.
Yeah, because you, you look at the money it costs to, you know, eventually replace a bridge like that. And it's, you know, for one, for one house.
Yeah.
It's um, it's pretty pricey.
The DOT had a press release in last month about the, the bad bridges in Iowa and. Unfortunately, their comments were, well, it's not really that big of a problem because the vast majority of theirs are on low traffic roads and. Not many people use them. It's like. They're not out there seeing that's, a lot of those are the only access to somebody's property, so what are you gonna do? Buy them whole property? You can't just close a bridge if that's their only access, so it is an issue that we can't just ignore. But we're trying to, yep, we're changing our prioritization on picking the bridges that. It's not just an inconvenience, it's. Legal access to their properties, the only way they had to get to it, so we've got to do those first unfortunately.
Obviously, yeah, we can't strand people, but I also get concerned about. People wanting to move out into the unincorporated areas. And build new homes and don't think about the fact that we have a bridge that might be on a closure list. And I'd really like to figure out a way to kind of get ahead of that one.
Yes. Think that's something, we talked in the past, working with planning development, building permits come in and stuff to. Maybe analyze those a little better and give them a heads up, but. At this point, I don't know there's a way to stop them from building unless it was some changes in planning development regulations. That's something we should probably look at.
Yeah, I think so. Any questions?
Good report, thank you.
Uh, moving now to planning and development quarterly report. I believe we have Marcus Ammon on Zoom. Hi Marcus, can you hear us?
One second, there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, let's see here. Thank you, Bryce. Morning board, um, so here is our quarterly report. As you can see, our permits have gone back up, uh, kind of had to slow a couple of years with COVID everywhere and kind of slowed down a little bit. One thing that we do wanna really highlight, you'll see that the average dwelling value for the third quarter looks to be a lot lower than it has been. Um, however, this is due to, we've had a few. New, in our current system, we don't differentiate between. Uh, primary dwelling and then the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was passed. Um, in the last year, so we've actually seen. A few different applications for those, uh, which is kind of interesting since. A lot of times our changes take a while to see, uh, but we were able to see this one immediately start having an effect. Um, I think we had for sure three. Three of the five, I think were for accessory dwelling units. So going on from there, um, the next is general map of where requests have come from. Um, one thing to note is that sometimes our nine-one-one permits, you can see it's got points inside of Nevada. Those are due to people coming in who don't have access. Or have a hard time. Doing things online and they come in and put in their permits with us in our office. Um, so for nine-one-one permits, those ones end up being placed in Nevada, um, just on this map. But for the rest of them. Um, those are all ones that people have requested. Through their own uh, system and we're able to get those points out. Our next one shows kind of how our. Permits are broken down against five single-family dwellings. Again, three of those are. Um, accessory dwelling units, seen some additions, a lot of accessory structures. Solar arrays were a little bit. During the year, not, not comparing quarter to quarter, but during the year, uh, this is kind of when the solar arrays slowed down. And then our next slide is for development activities that we completed. We didn't have as many as you can see, uh, compared to other quarters. Part of that. Is. Fewer, um, just made a lot of subdivisions last year around this time, um, so less of those. Which is. It's kind of, we'll see those spike every once in a while and then after those subdivisions, it takes a while for. Those developments to take place and then they'll come back in again. Then other kind of permits that we took, um, see we, a lot of new addresses went out this quarter. Um, for new houses, I think. Two I did were just for replacements, so kind of like Darren was talking about the. Street signs are starting to get a little. Works for wear, um, so some, as people start to notice that they're nine-one-ones, either they get damaged. By a vehicle or they've just been out there for so long that they need to be replaced. I had a couple of conceptual review meetings, um, some of those all. Go forward with either CUP or uh, subdivision requests. But then I think a couple, I think two of them will go forward and two of the other ones probably won't go forward. As far as other activities that we've done, um, so our department recently took over reviewing all the Platts survey. That. Come in prior to them being recorded. Since we took that over, uh, we've done eighteen of those. Leslie has really taken that up, um, led the charge on that, has been instrumental in the transition there. Has been a great help. Uh, the debris site, we've moved base two, um, we have a meeting. The end of the week with them for some kind of preliminary. Drawings, um, and plans. Right before Amelia left, she brought ordinance three one-two, uh, we updated the future land use mapping. Um, and the manufactured housing community survey, um, is being prepared to be sent out. We got a list of all the lots that are occupied in the mobile home parks, and so those will go out. And Leslie again did a big part of that and translating all of the, translating the survey. Into Spanish so we can send it in two languages, which again is a huge benefit to county and. We really appreciate the work that her and Andrea have put into all that. The last slide. Is kind of our work program, um, as you all know, when. Well, we're in the process of identifying the permanent director, um, we kind of put these things on hold. And once Leanne is back in or comes down to playing in development. We will get back to work on getting some of these things finished up and updating for the next year. That's what we have for you. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Marcus? Thank you, Marcus. That's a really, really good report. We appreciate all the work that you've been doing and your willingness to step in and. Kind of take the reins for a while and keep everything moving forward, so thank you for the report.
Welcome. Have a good day, board.
You too. Uh, other reports, we have first quarter FY twenty-four financial report. Morning Lisa.
So we have eight departments that are. A little over or a lot over twenty-five percent of the year. Couple notes, big projects, big payments for IRVM and group homes. Um, I think the group homes will steady out now. They did uh, all the roofs, so that was a pretty big chunk of that. Uh, overall, we're at sixteen percent of the expenditures for the.
Can you pull the microphone closer? I'm just worried. Thank you.
Overall, we're at sixteen and a half percent basically of the year. Our fund balances, you know, we're about right, right on track as to where uh, we would expect to be in twenty-five percent of the year. Secondary roads is only fifteen percent of their fund balance has been used, but other than that, the rest of them are in the twenties. Revenues, we have again eight departments that are over on revenues, which is good. Property taxes, when I looked at it, they had until Monday to pay taxes, so when I did a quarter end or. Month end of the thirtieth, they hadn't posted all the payments for the quarter or for the, for the first half yet, but we're at forty-six percent, so we're. Fairly close, it looks to me like. And overall, we're at thirty, almost thirty-five percent of our revenues, so. Any questions?
Moving now to discussion and direction on modification to the agreement with primary healthcare for the dental clinic support and medical clinic office renovation project. Morning Leanne.
Good morning. I just have a couple um, comments to just review the process with the board and then Nathan Simpson. With primary healthcare is joining virtually, um, just as a reminder, um, you've seen this a few times lately. Uh, sub recipients applied for funding, um, October twenty twenty-one, we finally. Kind of reached some decisions later that year and started putting agreements in place in twenty twenty-two and then twenty, even into twenty twenty-three. Um, what's before you right now is a request from primary healthcare to modify the portion that was awarded for construct. Construction and renovation, which was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into. Um, a, a different approach than what was initially spelled out in the application materials. Um, what the board has done is heard these types of requests, um, given direction to staff, whether or not to proceed with. Completing an amendment to the agreement and then based on that, staff would then forward that agreement amendment to. Amendment to the agreement to the sub recipient and then come forward with that on a consent agenda. Example, we had zirings today on your consent agenda. Do you have any questions on the process? And then with that, I'll turn it over to Nathan to, to share what he has to share.
Good morning, Nathan.
Good morning and thank you, Leanne, and thank you supervisors for having me here today. Um, hopefully the, uh, the table that was attached to the agenda is, is pretty self-explanatory. Um, out of a. Not, not too big of an alteration or renovation project uh, budget, we're just proposing to make one small change, so. Um, one of the items that we had listed in the uh, original application was to convert some of our unused space, so we have an X-ray room that. Um, we haven't used for the past nine years and we don't really anticipate that we'll use it. Um, in the foreseeable future, converting that into a kind of a shared care team space, so clinical support staff, front office staff. Um, and others utilizing that space. What we have found, um, as Leanne mentioned, since we initially submitted the, the plan. Uh, to now is that we're, we're realizing additional space in other ways. Uh, part of that is part of this project as well, basically consolidating some of our office space uh, by. Putting in smaller office furniture, moving people into offices together, uh, so we do not anticipate that we will need to utilize. Uh, that, that X-ray room space, um, as a replacement to that. Uh, we are instead proposing that we do a refresh of our waiting room and our restrooms, so basically just installing new flooring. Um, and new paint, just making it a more welcoming and inviting space uh, for our patients and their, uh, their family members. Uh, we don't anticipate that's any change to the budget, um, if anything, it may be a slight reduction in the cost. Um, however, uh, you know, as, as you're well aware with any budget. Uh, it's just a, a best guess of what things are going to cost, um, being that we submitted that budget a couple of years ago. Um, costs may have increased, have likely increased since then, so we may, um, we may see some of that. Savings from uh, changing that one line item uh, be picked up in other areas of the alteration and renovation project.
Nathan, if I may ask, if you're, if the room you're not going to utilize or convert. But it was a non-utilized area in the first place, are you still going to use it at some capacity or just leave it as is?
So it is, it is actually utilized now, um, it's not utilized for X-ray as it was initially intended. Um, instead, we use it for overflow for um, staff that are. Um, not permanently located in Ames, but come up and, and are there periodically, so we have a. A family planning program manager that offices out of there, um, a couple of days a week. Um, so she offices out of that space, um, we do, um, we have in the past used that for centering pregnancies, so we did group pregnancy visits. Um, in that space, it's, it's a, a large room, um, it, it offers some capacity for, for group visits like that, so. I anticipate that we'll continue to use it for that purpose, um, additionally. Additional group visits, whether it's pregnancy group visits or diabetic or behavioral health, we'll use it in that way and then overflow for additional staff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I I just question whether replacing the flooring and painting the restrooms is part of what the original purpose for ARPA dollars were. I think I'm just, I'm just a little, I'm struggling a little bit with that. So.
From an operational standpoint, it does not increase our enhance our ability to serve patients. It's it's more of a patient experience component. So it's it's really just making it a more welcoming and and accommodating environment for our patients to to be in. That space has not been updated since twenty fourteen. So it's it's gone through some wear and tear. Unfortunately, it's one of those things that we don't we always want to do that in our budgets. However, our budgets are so slim that we end up never having the money to do that year over year. So it has it has gone longer than most of our sites without a refresh and it's certainly just a an aesthetic thing for our patients to feel more comfortable.
And that's just the one area of change. Everything else on this list you are not changing.
That is correct.
Do you have an estimate for how much you expect that to to cost?
I don't have that information available at the moment, but I can get that information to you.
And have you started on the other areas, Nathan, in your?
We we have not actually the, knowing that we were going to make a change to this project potentially and and needing the board's approval for that, we have not proceeded with obtaining competitive quotes from from other vendors. So we haven't, we haven't started any of the project yet because we haven't done any of that comparison quotes.
Okay.
And I'm just looking at the application that was originally submitted and it states primary healthcare's project spans access to dental and medical care, including COVID related testing and vaccinations. Also talks about dental support staff and reconfiguration to give vulnerable populations greater access. That's what the application originally was, was to increase access, increase services. So I think that fits with what you're saying.
They are using the one room that they were going to. So they're, they are using that room for additional, I guess they call it tabling or whatever.
The waiting room?
No, I
The X-ray room.
The the X-ray room. You're kind of using it as what we kind of call tabling. So you've got people that come in, but they're not in every day.
Yes, correct. We call that hoteling in our, in our organization. Correct.
I I get what you're saying. I also look at they're doing the majority of what listed on on here. And if we say no to that, I'm assuming once they go up for quotes, it still may come out for the amount that we allocated to them for all the other areas that we approved for them.
Leanne, you've been looking at the ARPA regs pretty extensively. Yes, that's the word I'm looking for for the last couple of years. What do you think about this request?
I'll be honest, I'm a little bit concerned that funding would just go towards flooring and and painting and whether that would truly meet what the intention of ARPA funding was geared towards. However, given Lisa's statement that she just made, when they do get bids back, I find it highly likely that they will be at the amount that was proposed for this, if not more even or withstanding the painting and the flooring, given the climate with costs lately. So I think even without taking action and this, they'll still be at the hundred twenty thousand just for this particular portion of the
Construction project.
Then to me, it doesn't make sense to go ahead with this amendment.
You may need to amend just because, well, we did leave a pre-general, just said construction slash renovation for a hundred twenty thousand dollars in the budget. So that may just cover it.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
And then they can report back to the county as to how the bids come back to and and see where we are at that point.
I think that would make sense. So to just leave things as is for now.
Now.
That's what I, that's what I would say.
Nathan, are you hearing everything okay?
I'm I'm hearing, I just want to be sure I understand correctly. So are we, should we bid this project as inclusive of what we're proposing with replacing the flooring in the waiting room and the restrooms and see how that comes back? Or leave that out of it and and don't quote that part of the project at all?
Well, I think you can bid it with that included with the full intention of the form of payment for that portion of the project would not be ARPA funds. From an operational standpoint, so it's one entire project that you're getting a bid on, getting competitive bids on. Does that make sense?
It it does. I think from a, from a capital project standpoint, we don't have what that will likely come back as, just in capital funds available at the at the moment. So I guess I would I would then proceed with not bidding that component of the project and just bidding all the other elements instead.
Well, if you, if you if you bid the whole project, including that portion, you should be able to hold that that portion out if necessary. I mean, if it goes over, right?
Correct. And we could, we could bid that as an alternate. So if, yeah, if all, if all things considered, it comes in under, under cost, that's an alternate that could be included.
Right, right.
Understood. That is, if if that is how you're suggesting we proceed, that is how we will proceed.
Yep.
And then once you do get the bids back, we can touch base again if necessary. Revisit with the board at that time.
That sounds, that sounds great. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Have a good day.
You too.
Any upcoming agenda items? Thank you, Leanne. Moving to public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or come forward to the table. Seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close public comment to public comment number two and move to liaison assignments. Committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Hiddens.
Sure, be attending the strategic planning meeting this afternoon. I have a thing with the Board of Supervisors with the sixty forward this afternoon, and then I have an ARC meeting tonight. Tomorrow, I have an appointment and then thank you Supervisor Merkin for forwarding the transportation. I do plan on attending that. And then I also have a NACO workforce meeting in the afternoon and it looks like a Women of NACO Zoom call at five tomorrow night. I have that on my calendar. Thursday, I plan on attending the childcare meeting at the chamber and then in the afternoon for a couple hours, I'll be kind of job shadowing in the treasures office. Friday, I have a workforce development meeting bright and early, and then I have DCAT in the afternoon. Monday, I have a meeting with Erin in the morning. I have a lunch meeting and then in the afternoon, it looks like we have another COVID, that COVID, excuse me, opioid funding workshop.
Okay, I've got many of the same meetings, strategic plan, the sixty four center this afternoon and the AAMPO meeting with transportation collaboration tomorrow. The childcare meeting, I'm also Thursday and Friday going to try to zoom in on the Iowa Ideas twenty twenty three conference, picked it up from a website or from email. It looked kind of interesting. So I'm going to try to spend some time Thursday and Friday on that. And then Monday is the opioid meeting. So.
Yep, I pretty much got most of all those things on my calendar, too. The only thing additional is I've got a boost meeting tomorrow morning. And an alternatives meeting in the afternoon on Thursday. I'm also going to try and hop on that conference. It does look really good. Flu shots Thursday in Ames at the Human Services building from seven to nine. In case anyone still hasn't gotten their flu shots. And that would be the only additional. Well, I've got a NACO Art and Arts and Culture Commission meeting Monday afternoon. And then, yeah, the opioid meeting in the evening. So that looks like about it. Anything further?
I move, we adjourn second.
Moved and seconded, Hiddens.
Hi.
Merkin.
Hi.
Basil. I, we're adjourned.
Thank you.